We have seven o'clock, so we'll call the regular common council meeting to order.
She excused.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Oberstadt. Johnson.
Present.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Dugan is excused. MacComb.
I am here.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
I am present.
I am present, we do have a quorum. Would you please join me in standing for our salute to the flag.
Our flag to the nation, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I haven't done it in a while, so I wrote them down. Recently attended what they call the chief executives workshop in, for the state of Wisconsin, and those are always fun because it helps us understand that everyone has problems, and they're all the same problems when it comes to municipalities, even in other countries as we found while we were visiting our sister city. Never enough money to do all the things that we need to do. We could all use more help to get the things done, you get the idea. Community leaders everywhere have been involved in discussions, research, and planning regarding what we can do to not only attract, but retain good quality people. Technology allows many people to work from just about anywhere. The days of moving somewhere for a job are fading. So if people don't need to move somewhere because of a job, why do they choose to live where they do? I believe it's the everything else. It's everything else that matters, right? The things like parks, arts, music, schools, neighborhoods, the people, and everything else we do that isn't work. We have great jobs here in central Wisconsin, diverse businesses and manufacturers, but still do a lot of other places. But one thing we do really well is the everything else. We're a city of about 27,000. Not only do we have a city band, but we have our very own symphony orchestra. We have several art galleries, sculpture park, live music venues, several golf courses, 30-acre dog park, disc golf, Green Circle Trail, skating and BMX areas, fabulous shopping, dining, laser tag, children's museum, and now public wifi. The list goes on. We did a quick 30 seconds on TV show once, and that didn't even break the tip of the iceberg. We also have a lot of little things, things like saying hi to people on the street. We had one business from the southeast part of the state that was looking to move. We wound up grabbing lunch downtown after the meeting, and several people said hi to us as we passed, and some waved from across the street. Over dinner or over lunch, they told me it felt homey, like Norman Rockwell. And that's what sold them on Stevens Point. They moved here. Another woman told me that her husband took a job in central Wisconsin, and as she was looking online at Marshfield, Wisconsin Rapids, Wausau, and other areas for a place to call home, she saw a video of the Creative Crosswalk grand opening, and decided Stevens Point had the vibe she wanted. "That's it," she said, "I want to live there." And they moved here soon after. It's been said that tourism is the first date with the community. If it goes well, there may be a second, or a third, and maybe a long-term relationship. Getting the word out about all the things there are to do in our community is important. Social media can help with that, and sometimes it's just stopping to say hi to a group of Suzuki students and their parents that leaves a lasting impression on them. We're casting with the BASS National Collegiate Championship and making sure their visit is the best we can offer. There was a national Belgian Malinois event here that we welcomed, and as always, I told the group that if there was anything we could do to make their stay more enjoyable, just ask. Well, wouldn't you know it, they did. A couple from Texas, I think, they wanted to know about a local brewery that some of their friends back home told them about. So a few quick phone calls, and we managed to help them out, and I think they took home a few cases of beer. They remarked to the organizer afterwards that this was, they have never felt more at home. UWSP students join us each year from all over the country, and we'll soon have a chance to show them why we're special, and hopefully they'll choose Stevens Point to raise their families. Mayor Westcott used to give out keys to the city. His were chocolate, not like the ones we gave Henry Winkler, but it was still a key. He had coins made for the Clark Street Bridge opening that said, "Good for one free crossing." We give out pencils to kids who visit, or junior firefighter stickers. Maybe it's sending a small gift like cheese curds, or having a beautiful Christmas tree downtown, or maybe it's just listening for a while to hear their story. I heard other mayors did other things, but the theory was the same. We want people to feel special, and those little things show that they are special. Little things can mean a lot, and we can all do some of those little things. Part of our job is promoting our city. So stay positive, be proud of your city, brag about your city, the big things and the little things. You're part of something really special here, and that's something we can all smile about. We'll move on to the items, item number four, which is persons who wish to address the mayor. Sorry, I got to read the public notice, right? Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item must register their request at this time other than a public hearing. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. Kelly should have had slips going around at the door if anyone wished to speak on any of our agenda items. Is there anyone who didn't get a slip that would wish to speak? Okay, then we will move on. Item number four is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. We have one speaker, Leo Jacoby. Name and address for the record, please.
Leo Jacoby, 1724 Oak Street. Just want to add to that long list of why we love Stevens Point with some events coming up in September. A year ago, Mayor Wiesa led a public reading of the Constitution at the band shell. We had a couple dozen people show up, we read every word of the text. And this year, I was inspired by a Franciscan website called Pace e Bene, Italian for peace and goodness. And they, this is the fifth year that they're doing a week of activity for developing a culture of peace. And so I thought, that sounds like a good, good operation, let's connect with that. And rather than a single event, what we're doing is setting up a whole week of activity, September 15th to the 23rd. And the first activity would be Sunday afternoon, like democracy in the park, we'll read just excerpts of the Constitution and invite people up to the mic to say, "How do you keep civil discourse civil? In an age of polarity, we have to find common ground." Surely the Constitution is a starting point, but then how do we develop good relationships with all parties? A next event would be a film at the Franciscans downtown that's held every Wednesday. On Thursday of that week, we're going to, Lois Lawler will lead a public meeting about peacemaking in the community, and how to network with each other to continue a calendar of peacemaking throughout the year. On Friday, we'll celebrate the International Day of Peace with a choral gathering at the band shell. So we're going to be inviting all choirs to participate and sing two or three songs about peace, and we'll see what comes of that. Then there's, on Saturday, we're going to have a walking for peace around Janus, Lake Jonas at Schmickley Reserve. That'll be a family-friendly event, and the children can contribute to a piece of art while they're on the walk. And finally, a new film series on the environment, making peace with the planet. So peacemaking ranges from the family to the planet. And the last Sunday's Journal had an extensive article about domestic abuse. So peacemaking starts in the family, but then we had to find, how do we build the relationships with one another to have a cohesive city, and county, and state, and nation, and planet? So I'm going to make available to you a draft copy, a mini version of the poster. We hope to finalize this poster this week and start getting it out for our publicity efforts. There's an email there, makingpeace18@gmail.com, it's on your handout. If you have a reply to this endeavor, or suggestion, or request, please email me your ideas. You're the first to know about it, so we thought this was a good place to begin giving the community notice of a Making Peace Week, September 15th to 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be handing those flyers out. If anyone from the public wants a copy of that flyer, they'll be available at the clerk's office tomorrow morning. That exhausts our non-agenda items. Next up, I am very excited to present to you some, yes?
You go first. Oh, okay. May I have?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, yes, absolutely. President of the council, Melissa Johnson, you have the floor.
Just trying to move things along, aren't you?
I forgot to ask if anybody wanted to speak from the council, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. First, I want to, on behalf of the Friends of Emerson Park, invite folks to the park on Sunday, the 26th, 27th, whatever Sunday is. From noon to two o'clock, there's going to be a small celebration, while we hope it's a little bit bigger than a small celebration. An informal dedication of the park and congratulating everybody for the great work. There's going to be a pet parade, and yoga, and music, so join us if you have a chance. The other thing I wanted to say briefly was, and probably not so briefly, on Thursday night, my colleagues on county board and I approved three resolutions to go to referenda. And I'm very pleased that almost all of them were unanimous. The one I'm most pleased with is the healthcare center referenda. And for those who don't know, the healthcare center has been owned by Portage County for over 100 years, providing superb service. And in fact, they have a five-star Medicaid rating. This is, this is top-notch. In an old facility, everyone there deserves to be commended. Over the years, Portage County has made an investment in that facility to offset some of the costs of managing the folks there, particularly those who are on Medicaid. We have a fairly high Medicaid, our Medicaid population, so they need some additional assistance. Over the years, that assistance from Portage County has declined. In 2012, it was 1.2 million, to finally in 2017 and 18, it was only $100,000 of levy used to offset the costs of caring for some of the fraillest and poorest of our elderly in our community. This referenda, I'm proud to say, was passed, or the resolution to go to referenda was passed unanimously by my colleagues. It first started off in the healthcare center committee, which I chair. It was also passed unanimously there. We're excited about this opportunity to spend the next four years, if this referenda's passed, $1.4 million, or up to $1.4 million per year, to offset those costs to help those elderly. That turns out to be about $25 per 100,000 evaluation. This will be used to help offset those costs, manage those costs, and plan for the future. And the healthcare center committee, along with the executive operations, finance, and space and properties, will be working vigorously to make sure we have solutions for our elderly. So I wanted to publicly thank my colleagues on county board, and particularly my colleagues on the healthcare center committee, and all of the staff who helped us on this.
Great, thank you. Alder person Oberstadt.
Hi. I wanted to thank the staff and my colleagues and the public for being so flexible with me with the birth of Teddy here. He's been coming to city meetings since he was two weeks old, and since there is no maternity leave for public service, we're going to continue to bring him, and I may be stepping in the back of the room, or he may have a outburst of excitement at a particular agenda item, so I don't know when that will stop and/or when I'll be able to leave him at home, but for now, we have to stay pretty much joined at the hip. So thank you, everyone, for your flexibility.
Any other alders that wish to say something? All righty. Then we will move on to item number five now, which I'm still very excited to present. I'm going to ask up some ladies who are going to talk to us a little bit about Portage County United Way and their 2018 campaign. So you can come to the front podium if you'd like. When you get to the podium, I know there's several speakers, please introduce yourselves and tell us about the United Way. You shouldn't need to touch the microphones at all.
We're all set, right?
They pick up everything.
Sometimes I'm tall, and I have to move that microphone up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for the opportunity to share Portage County's 2018 United Way campaign. Yes, it's that time of the year again. My name is Kathy Davies, and I have the distinct privilege of co-chairing this year's campaign with four amazing women, Vicki Nason, Amber Howick, Anna Wisebroad, and Shannon Semerling. As you can see, we each represent a different age dynamic, very similar to the over 30 programs and services across Portage County that rely on United Way funding each and every year. I don't have to tell all of you that we really live in a very special place. Portage County is a place where we support each other through the good times and the bad, a place that believes in providing families, young and old, with a support system to enable them to sustain strong and healthy lives. It's not like this in other counties across Wisconsin. Through gifts both large and small, from private citizens, workplace campaigns, and local businesses, we have built a very special place. Each of us here have a unique United Way story, thus the theme for this year's campaign. For me, both personally and professionally, I have been involved in this area's nonprofit community for over 35 years, both as a volunteer and as a staff person. I have seen firsthand the impact your dollars make. A warm meal delivered to an older adult's home, a safe place for our kids after school, work experience for those developmentally disabled, intervention services for families so they can be better parents, shelter for the homeless, education and training to increase family income, and the list goes on and on. I have written many United Way requests as well for funding, sharing the need and demonstrating the positive outcomes that your dollars have made. And I have been on the side of the table reviewing United Way requests, and the other side, asking for the dollars, and answering the questions from the allocation team. Now, this allocation team is a group of volunteers from across the community who distribute the dollars to where the greatest need is and to fill any unmet needs.
I'm Vicki Nason. In addition to supporting current programs across Portage County, the United Way works with this community to find solutions to our greatest concerns. Through data provided by the Portage County Life Report, the Alice Report, and CAP Services Family Survey, we are working with community partners to address mental health, alcohol, and other drug abuse, and financial stability issues, all priorities as identified in the 2017 Life Report. It looks like that. And LIFE Report stands for Learning Indicators for Excellence. Here are some startling statistics we learned. From 2015 and 16, substantiated child maltreatment cases in Portage County increased from 19.4% to 21.2%. This compares to the statewide average of 12.5%, and the average in Milwaukee County of 6.2%, with the largest incidence of maltreatment found in children of ages zero to four. The ratio of mental health providers to residents in Portage County is 830 to 1. And Portage County is not alone here. Across Wisconsin, there simply are not enough mental health professionals. 14.3% of our high school students reported seriously considering suicide, compared to 13.2% statewide. And this one is staggering. The number of students eligible for free or reduced meals went from 21% in 2001 to 35% in 2016. These are alarming Portage County statistics. Change will not happen overnight, but it needs to start now. In 2012, a consistent and disturbing trend was revealed in that year's Life Report. Each year, there is a recurring 50% education gap between economically disadvantaged children and those children living in economically stable households. Shortly after that time, the United Way began collaborating with other organizations in the area, and what we now call the Born Learning Initiative started to take shape. Research shows that critical age for brain development in our children is from zero to three years of age, a time when the foundation is laid for future success. The Born Learning Initiative partners with Health and Human Services, the education community, healthcare providers, nonprofits, public health, and the business community. Together, we have created a screening tool that will be used by all area medical providers to screen pregnant women and children up to age four. Families who are in need of additional support will be offered programming to prepare their child for kindergarten, to be kindergarten-ready. This program is open to all Portage County children regardless of financial status. Our vision is that all Portage County children will be safe, healthy, and ready for kindergarten.
Hello, I'm Anna Wisebroad, and we should all be proud of the work our United Way and the citizens of Portage County are doing. We have been recognized by Charity Navigator and GuideStar with the highest ratings possible, exceeding industry standards for financial efficiency, and adhering to best practices. Your trust and generosity has no doubt contributed to United Way of Portage County's per capita giving of $42.08 per person, which ranks among the highest in the country. You and the citizens of Portage County have made that possible. Our campaign is already off to a great start. Our kickoff was last Friday at Project Fresh Start, where we announced the results from our 2018 campaign pace setters. Delta Dental, Great Lakes Education Services, the Village of Plover Police, Fire, and Administration, as well as our United Way endowment, were this year's pace setters, and they reported results totaling over $400,000, or 15% of our overall goal for this year's campaign. We're so proud of these organizations and their employees, whose example will inspire others to follow in their lead throughout the campaign. Our priority with this year's campaign is to increase participation. To help, we once again have a number of incentives. This is the fun part. The Scafidi Motors has generously donated a vehicle valued at $43,000, and actually, the winner can select from six different vehicles, including a Ford F-150 pickup as one of the choices. There are five other equally exciting prizes awaiting anyone who donates $52 or more, and that is just $1 a week. Plus, each donor of the $52 or more will receive a coupon book that looks like this, and is valued at nearly $2,000. Our greatest percentage of gifts continues to come from individual donors who donate about 65% of the dollars. Another 35% comes from generous corporate donations throughout the county. Many workplace campaigns are getting underway now. All will wrap up by November 27th with our campaign announcement set for Wednesday, December 27th. Our 2018 goal is $2,950,000. It will take everyone's effort and support to make this happen, but as we've seen, this community is pretty amazing and always steps up to the challenge.
Hello, I'm Amber Howick, and I'll be brief in wrapping up the presentation. Tonight, the 2018 campaign chairs ask you, what is your United Way story? We ask you to join us in sharing your story with family, friends, and coworkers, and to join us with giving to the United Way. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to any of us or call the United Way office directly. To make a donation also, we have handed out some pledge forms that are available to you. We look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I heard that Director Schrader said if he was going to win, if he won the truck, he would sell it and donate all the money to the fireworks. Okay, item number six is on page five of your packet, and that is our consent agenda. Are there any alderpersons who would like to pull anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? Alderperson MacComb.
Yes, I would like to pull, da-da-da, item number two from the Personnel Committee meeting of August 13th, 2018.
May?
That is, moving positions in grade F to grade G of the pay plan matrix and setting the minimum hourly rate. Well, I want to talk about that first part.
Got you. Okay. Is there, oh, I'm sorry, more?
Well, I just wanted to say that we've received some new information since...
Actually, alderperson, let's hold that for when we pull the item for discussion.
I thought, okay.
Is there any other items that need to be pulled for further discussion? Okay, I need to read the minutes and actions of the Personnel Committee meeting of August 20th that was held earlier this evening. That was a request for out-of-state travel for 2018 that we couldn't get in time for the Personnel Committee meeting. The meeting was called to order at 6:51. Alders MacComb, Jennings, and Nabel were present, therefore there was a quorum. Absent was alderperson Oberstadt, and excused was alderperson Kathy Dugan. The motion was made by alderperson MacComb, seconded by alderperson Nabel to approve the out-of-state travel request for John Quirk. Per the information provided, he has money available in his budget. Votes showed three ayes, zero nays. The motion passed, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:55. We have some speakers who wish to speak on the items, so what I'm going to do is allow those people to speak first, then if there's any alderpersons that wish to pull an item for further discussion after that, we'll take those, and then I would accept the motion to...
Approve the consent.
Approve the consent agenda without the items for discussion, then we'll come back and discuss the ones that are pulled. Okay? So first on the agenda is Todd Neinfeld from Portage County. He is going to be speaking on the minutes and actions of the Finance Committee meeting from August 13th. Item number nine, the request by the Portage County Library, or Portage County, to amend the library lease agreement. Is that correct, Todd?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Todd Neinfeld, Portage County Facilities Director. Portage County is asking to remove the window replacement as part of the current lease agreement for the library building. The Portage County had a window designed that, what design was refused by the Historical Preservation Society, as it didn't meet the aesthetics that the current windows do. It was an aluminum-clad window that had been designed. The Historical Preservation Society requested that we put in a double-hung wood window, which is exactly what's in the building right now. The windows that are in the building right now are in good shape, with the exception of one window that needs a sash repair, and the windows need paint. To replace those windows on a project this size is very costly, and it's an inconvenience to the entire library system. These improvements that were, as part of that lease agreement, were identified jointly between the city of Stevens Point and Portage County. The estimated cost when the lease agreement was agreed upon was $579,000. The actual bid estimate was $697,000, or over $118,000 above the estimated cost. Taking that in consideration with the fact that the windows that you're getting replaced would be no different than the windows that are there, and the fact that Portage County has already spent $5,000 to design the new aluminum-clad windows, that $5,000 is non-refundable, and that design is no longer valid. It would need to go through redesign. So I guess I'm asking for your consideration to remove that as part of the lease agreement, and if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Just to remind the alders, at Finance, the request to pull that section out of the lease was denied. That was the only thing that we talked about, because the request was to pull it. It wasn't to change it or do something else with it, but we did discuss some of those options. Just a refresher. We also have alderperson Cindy Nabel on item number six.
I'll go right from here.
Well, it says here, minutes. Do you want to talk about the minutes?
Can I do it right from here?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Sorry.
Thank you. I am only speaking in, not to pull this, but because I had a couple, three different constituents that asked me, since they could not come, to voice what they wanted to say. And so I just wanted to make sure I was able to do that for them. Cindy Nabel, District Three. The names of the people were Lois Alfson, 1817 Portage, Joe Fox, Prey Street, and Vera Rooney, 1801 Portage. And they were, their issue was on the consent agenda we're talking about right now, is, I got my paper, had it. It was on the July... Was on the July, July 16th and July, July 16th and August 13th. Sorry, I didn't get this right. July 16th, when we had our meeting about the parking, it would be item number 15. There was a proposal made to, I made, to postpone to get specifics about parking from the kiosses, and that was agreed upon and went forward. I want to make sure it's noted, people were upset. They thought that the next meeting on this would be postponed until August 13th, which was mentioned. However, there was also mentioned that through, a second was through Johnson, that amended her motion to postpone until action, we could convene until a special common council meeting, and at that time, we weren't sure, the council was not sure how many people would be there for an agenda. So the newspaper printed that it would be August 13th. So these constituents had thought that that's when they could come in to vote and make their points of view about the parking. However, the meeting, the special common council meeting was August 6th, because there was enough people to do the agenda. It was put in the paper prior to that, but it was the Friday before the meeting on Monday. I wanted to make sure that people understood that it was published, and that the paper had put in, they only got one part, was saying that that would be on the July 16th meeting, and it wasn't. So it wasn't anything that the city tried to do, or August 13th, I'm sorry. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. And the second thing that they had asked me to talk about was about the overnight parking and their concerns and frustration that there was not a public city meeting in regards to that. I know I held a meeting for my district about parking in general, and some of those people did come, not all of those, but they had wondered why the city did not hold an open public meeting for the whole city regarding overnight parking. So I wanted to make sure that I voiced that for them, but also explained why they might have gotten confused on when that was going to be an agenda item. It was not a secret special council meeting. It was changed because there was going to be a, there could be a quorum, and there wouldn't be for the later date, so that's why. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, I want to point out that there were no less than two public meetings held in regards to overnight parking, more if you count committees, but that's what these meetings are. They're the public meetings. So we did have public meetings open to anyone, not just from the city, but anyone, and we did have those meetings. Joy Berg? You're not Joy Berg.
Not. But she requested to speak, just in case there was any clarification.
Oh, I see. You're both speaking on the same topic, then, is that correct? Okay, so then we have Wendy Dolan, and Wendy, I'll let you start, and then whoever needs to speak after that. This is in regards to the Public Protection Committee meeting minutes, and that was in regards to a request to keep bees at 318 Washington Avenue. For clarification and refreshing the alders' memories, the motion was to postpone action on the beekeeping until we have an ordinance in place, and allowing these applicants to keep the status quo in regards to their beekeeping efforts until such time as we have that ordinance to be considered. Ms. Dolan?
Thank you. My name is Wendy Dolan. I live at 318 Washington Avenue, and I request permission to keep bees, specifically three hives on my, in my yard.
Sir, anything else you want to talk about?
Questions or anything? Well, I would like to say the bees have been in place since the end of May. There have been no issues with any neighbors. Everyone whom I talked to was very happy that the bees are there, with one exception, one man was concerned because he's allergic, but he didn't know we had bees for two months by the time I talked to him, so I don't think that there was an issue there. The bees are producing, they're pollinators, they're very, very busy hives that I've got going on right now.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. Any questions or any concerns I could answer?
Typically, we don't do interactions at these public statements, but I can tell you that we have had people meeting and talking about enacting a citywide bee ordinance. So if anybody has comments in regards to that, provide them either through my office, through the clerk's office, and as soon as we have something to consider, we'll make sure that you get notified.
Thank you.
And Joy?
I think we're done.
I think we're done.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
What happens to me next? Or what happens next to my permission?
Sure. So depending on what council chooses to do tonight, if they uphold the minutes and actions of the Public Protection Committee meeting, you are allowed temporarily to retain the amount of bees and hives that you have now until the council acts on a bee ordinance. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
The council could tonight, if they chose, to grant you a permission for a year or six months, or whatever it happened to be, but I think that probably the action of the Public Protection Committee would remain. It didn't sound like anybody was interested in pulling it yet, but we'll ask again.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Berg, did you have anything to add?
I...
Name an address, please.
My name's Joy Berg. I live in Wisconsin Rapids, and I was the one who started having bees. I plan to move to Point sometime soon. So that's why the bees got moved here. I had bees for either four or five years in my yard, never had a complaint, lots of interest. I did find that when I looked at the plants in my garden, because one of my interests is pollination, looked at, I have a huge honeysuckle, I looked at it, and there were five different kinds of bees on that plant. None of them mine. So there's going to be bees out there, and for the largest extent, they're pretty docile around people.
Okay. Thank you both.
And the honey's awesome.
Okay, now that you've had a couple of comments, is there any alders who wish to pull any other items for further discussion? If not, I would be willing to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda, or accept the consent agenda, minus the item from the Personnel Committee, item number two, which was pulled at alderperson McCombe's request. President Johnson?
Move to approve the consent agenda minus item number two of the Personnel Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by alderperson McCombe. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
McCombe.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
10-0-1.
10-0-1, that is approved. We will now come back to the minutes and actions of the Personnel Committee meeting of August 13th, specifically item two, moving positions in grade F to grade G of the pay plan matrix, and setting the minimum hourly rate for seasonal employees at $10 per hour. Alderperson McCombe, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm gonna ask Comptroller Treasurer Lattick to speak, but first of all, I just want to point out for the public and for everybody that we found out some additional information since the meeting was held that I think makes it absolutely necessary that we open this discussion up again, and it's yours.
Sure. So I did provide some additional information on the financial impact. One of the things that might not have been clear right away, or thought of right away, is that employees are eligible for step movement on January 1st, assuming that they're meeting performance expectations. So if we do move this date forward to September, as far as moving the grades, then that changes their step progression. So some of the employees who maybe would have been in the first step of G would instead advance to the second step in January. And then also for some of the employees that are currently at the max, that would make them eligible for a step January 1st, where they otherwise wouldn't be. So that's why it's a little bit more detailed as far as the financial impact. I know at the meeting, we had discussed that for 2019, an annual cost would be $3,816. Making this change to September, the impact for 2018 for the rest of the year would be $2,748, and then for 2019, the impact would be $13,586. So the overall budget impact for 2019, the difference between the two options, would be $9,770.
Okay. Alderperson, anything to add? Go ahead.
So to my mind, there's two impacts. One is more money, and we need to keep a tight eye on that, but the other is the step movement happening so quickly with just four months, and I don't know what sort of impacts that might have, but it seems like it could have, I mean, it would, for the people involved, it would be a good thing. For the people not involved, there might be some bad feelings. I don't, I don't know. I haven't had a chance to talk to people, but I just have concerns about making that change that we thought would be, I think we thought it would be $3,000 or something, and now it's a lot more, and then it moves them very quickly up a step.
Okay, any other comments? Alderperson Jennings?
The issue of September came up in the discussion of the meeting. It was not part of the agenda, and while employees who have heard this will be disappointed, they also weren't expecting it, because it came out of the meeting itself. So I'll need some guidance on how to make a motion, but I think we need to change this to what the original intent of the agenda item was.
Okay. If you wish to do that, alderperson, I believe, and I'll stand ready to have the city attorney jump in, but I believe the motion would be to authorize the, what do we call it? The moving of employees in grade F to grade G and increasing the minimum hourly rate for seasonal employees to $10 per hour effective January 1 of 2019. If you wanted to save time, if that was your intent, you can just reply by saying, "So moved."
So moved.
Seconded by alderperson Shore. Discussion there. Any comments from the audience on that item? So the motion before you is to authorize the moving of employees in grade F to grade G, making that the minimum grade for regular, full-time employees of the city, and increasing the hourly rate for seasonal employees to $10 per hour effective January 1, 2019. Alder, President Johnson, did you have comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the discussion. The only thing I'll say on this is this exemplifies the need for a systemic evaluation of compensation, because the quick advancement through the steps obviously does leave some people out, and that's the last thing we want to do, and that means the system, everyone in the system, needs to be evaluated so that we can appropriately compensate, retain the best and the brightest, and be a workforce that is the best.
Absolutely. One thing I want to point out, because the one thing that had occurred to me is, you know, the fact that, we say this all the time, but one small change can have a very rippling effect throughout the whole city. So it's important that if you have questions, if you have ideas to explore, talk to the staff. They're your resource there, and we can try and get many of your questions answered ahead of time. Sometimes it doesn't always work out, but making changes on the fly is, sometimes it doesn't give us enough opportunity to figure out all of the different rippling that can take place. Okay, everybody clear on the motion? Is there anyone who's not clear on the motion? You are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
No.
Niebone.
Aye.
McCombe.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Should be eight-two?
Eight to two.
Eight-two with one excused. The motion is adopted. Item number seven begins on page 84 of your packets, and that's a resolution for a conditional use permit to construct a storage warehouse building at 5370 Highway 10 East. Alderperson Morrow.
I move to approve the resolution for the conditional use permit for the construction of a storage warehouse at 5370 Highway 10 East.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by alderperson Niebone. Discussion? Alderperson Niebone?
This is actually in my district. It's, they wanna, they're using the area back behind Buffalo Wild Wings and Trek and Skis Meat Market as kind of an open storage area anyway. This will kind of make the area look a little bit tidier, and they're gonna do some fencing, and it shouldn't affect anybody, so I don't have any problems with it. I hope nobody else does either.
Good. We didn't have anybody sign up. Is there any comments from the audience? Hearing none. If you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. Opposed, no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
McCombe.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
10-0-1.
10-0-1, that's adopted. Item number nine is on page 93 of your packet, and that's an ordinance amendment for zoning, allowing for setbacks to be measured at the base of the structure if the eve of the structure protrudes 24 inches or less. Section 23.01 Sub 10 of the Revised Municipal Code. Alderperson Nabel.
I have a question on that.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Just wanted to know, is this for all zoning areas or a specific area?
It appears to be all zoning areas, but I'll let the director speak to that.
This would be for every zoning district. It pertains to the building, how they measure setbacks. So the setback measurement would be from the base of the structure as opposed to the eve. There were some inconsistencies between the building code and the zoning code. This clarifies them. So the only thing that we're adding here under section one of this amendment is item number 13 under A, that exception to the setback requirements regarding the eve. The rest of this stuff is currently in the zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Alderperson Oberstadt?
Approve all.
Okay, do I have a second? Seconded by, we'll give it to alderperson Morrow. Discussion? Alderperson Phillips?
I guess by doing this, is there any water runoff on a neighbor's property? Let us eliminate that.
I don't believe we have anything that allows for a 24-inch setback, so I would say no, but I'll let the director speak to that.
I'm just a little bit confused about it.
So typically, structures are set back about 25 feet from the front yard, typically seven to eight feet on the side yards, and about 15 on the rear yards, with the exception that sometimes there's an accessory building that can be set back three feet from a side or rear yard. This would still allow adequate distance to the side and rear yards with, typically what happens is they put a rain gutter on to direct stormwater back. There is also the exception that one can apply for through the traditional neighborhood ordinance that would allow a one-foot setback, however, they still need to maintain the structure on their property, and all stormwater needs to be maintained on their property. So this shouldn't have any impact on that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Comments from the audience? Okay, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
McCombe.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
10-0-1.
10-0-1, that's adopted. Item number 10 is on page 95 of your packet, and that is ratification or recommendation of the 2018-2020 AFSMI AFL-CIO Central Transportation Employees Tentative Agreement. Alderperson Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the tentative agreement.
Thank you. Seconded by alderperson McCombe. Discussion? Hearing none. Let's get a roll call, please.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
McCombe.
Aye.
Phillips.
of the 2018 to 2020 AFSMI AFL-CIO Central Transportation Employees Tentative Agreement. Alder Person Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the tentative agreement.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person McComb. Discussion? Hearing none. Let's get a roll call, please.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
10-01.
Item number 12 is, uh, page 112 of your packet, and that's consideration of a claim of Ursinus McCrery, an injury due to a trip and fall on a rock downtown. Motion was to deny. Alder Person, President Johnson?
Move to approve the denial.
Okay. Alder Person Shore, is that a second? Okay. So just for clarification, because we got a little backwards in there, the motion is to deny, approve the denial. So if you are in favor of approving the denial, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to approving the denial, you will vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Jennings?
Yes.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
10-01.
10-01, the motion to approve the denial is approved. Item number 13 is on page 117 of your packet, and that is utility easement request for Wisconsin Public Service in Buchholz Park. The park's director has compiled some additional information. And Director, do you want to share that, or you want me to share that?
At the last meeting, I was instructed to call around and see if anybody else has this type of situation, called Wausau Rapids, Marshfield, Eau Claire, and La Crosse. Nobody dealt with anything like this, so it's unique for us. So we're going to be setting precedent on how we think it should be handled. I met with the city assessor and Comptroller Treasurer Lattick today. We looked at all the different possibilities. It's in writing here what we agreed would be, would work the best for the situation. There's two situations here. One is if the easement, the very first one, it's an easement to service an individual property, is what we're talking about here. The recommendation would be we calculate the value of the land times 30%. We have 816 square feet here. We will still own the land at the end of it, but about 30% of the value or the use will be gone, because that permanent easement will be through that. So Steve and Corey both thought, and myself, that would be a fair thing, that we can evaluate situations like that as they come up. The second one would deal with an easement with more than one property. Wausau has a telecommunications line that goes through one of their parks. They actually have a license agreement. They take in 2,500 per year with a 3% increase. Eau Claire has a gas line that goes through, they just signed a 20-year lease for $1,000 a year, very similar to what we signed in 96, but we have no raise on it, an annual raise, where I think in the future, if we're going to do this, the easement, which is more than one, which would be a telecommunications, serving like the west side or serving Rapids that happens to come through town, we would set up that fee based on how much land they're going to take up for the easement, and start at $1,000 per year annual fee, and then with an escalator of maybe 3%, but evaluate those one-on-one.
So Director, is it my understanding then that your recommendation would be to grant the easement request from Wisconsin Public Service for a one-time fee of $489.60?
And you can see how we broke that down on the sheet there. The value of the land is $2 a square foot. The easement area is 816 square feet. The value would be $1,632, and 30% of that is $489.60, so one-time fee. Wisconsin Public Service would pay us that.
Alder Person Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. On a very, very small point that I noticed when I, at committee meetings, looked for 100 Buchholz Avenue on my maps.
Buchholz Park Street.
Street, yeah. My point exactly.
Right. Yep, Buchholz Park Street, not Buchholz Avenue. But the request from Public Service is for that easement at 100 Buchholz Park Street. Alder Persons, what are your wishes?
I have a question.
Alder Person Morrow?
So there's no plans for, for the park to use that land in the future, or is, I mean, or are there any plans to like, use any part of that easement at all?
Currently not, but that doesn't mean in the future, there couldn't be something that run through there. You know, between their property line and the street, that's 70 feet, let's say we had to run some, a new water line, or we built a shelter over on the side, and we had to run sewer, we would now have to get with Wisconsin Public Service to go across their easement.
Would we have to talk to the land, to the land owner?
Well, we are the land owner.
We own that land.
That's the point. We own the land. Public Service needs a utility easement to run utilities to one of their customers. So Public Service is asking for permission to do that across the public park land, because we are inhibiting the future use of that land to a certain extent. Based on the assessor's estimate, they're recommending 30% of the value, which would be $489.60 in this case.
Okay.
So as I said, the director, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director, you're recommending approval of the easement request from Wisconsin Public Service for a one-time fee in the amount of $489.60. Is that correct? Okay. Alder Persons? Alder Person Oberstadt?
I move to follow the director's recommendation and, I don't know how to word that, assess the easement at the cost of $489.60.
Close enough.
At a one-time?
One-time fee. Okay. Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion? So again, for clarification, the request, or the motion is to approve the easement request from Wisconsin Public Service for a one-time fee of $489.60 at 100 Buchholz Park Street. If you are in favor, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and clerk, call the roll, please.
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
10-01, the motion is adopted. The next several items, all are kind of together, and it's my understanding, based on the advice of the city attorney, that we should probably take item number 16 first, because without the new rates for income, there's really no need to issue the bonds or a couple of the other things. So without objection, I'm going to move item number 16 to the next item. Are there any objections for that? Okay. Item 16 is on page 155 of your packet. That's an ordinance amendment for the water and sewage, sewage systems, adoption of the new rates for the sewer utilities, section 13.17 of the Revised Municipal Code. It's a mouthful. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Alder Person Jennings?
Well, I would just like some more, some public discussion on this, because the public is not going to be necessarily knowledgeable that their rates are going up, and this came very quickly to counsel without lots of discussion.
Okay. Director Levkey, can you come to the podium here? Give us a little background, talk about the public hearings that, and the Public Service Commission that were involved in this, as well as reasons for doing so.
Yeah. Do you want me to talk specifically on wastewater, or both that and water?
I would say take the next couple of items and, and talk about all of them together, if you would, and then if Alder Persons have specific questions, they can ask.
Okay. So back, starting in about beginning of the year, but especially in February timeframe, the auditors came and did a presentation on our rate studies, which were started prior to then by several months, actually. So we're back in '17, as a result of the capital requests that were approved at the end of '17. Big capital years ahead of us, and these rates are reflecting the need to pay for those improvements. So in February, there were some estimates that the water rates were going to increase about 13 to 16%. We're still there. That's where those were. The presentation at the time listed the sewer rates lower, more around two, but the expected project costs back then were several million dollars less. So in a refresh of that study, essentially, accounting for the increased project costs, which are up in the $19.8 million range, those went up. Now, the sewer rates are being assessed a 15% across-the-board increase, so that's both fixed fees and volumetric fees, BOD, total suspended solids, all of that 15%. That accurately represented where the costs are coming from. So that was the recommendation of, of the audit team there. And on the water side, it's a little, it's a little different. For the sake of the single-family residences out there, so a family of four, for example, 2,500 cubic feet usage, which is pretty liberal, it's about $5 a month for both water, sewer, and that's on your entire bill. So your entire bill consists of water, sewer, storm, fire protection, the whole thing. It's been since 2010 since we've done a sewer rate increase, and 2012 since we've done water. So that comes to 2% or less on both of them, and we're in a pretty important time right now. We have a, like I just stated, $19 million treatment plan upgrade that we're, we've already embarked on, actually, and a loan closing date on that in the days to come following this action, hopefully following this action. And that has to do with the agreement you guys saw last Monday at finance, the financial assistance program agreement, and tonight is the bond resolution authorizing the city to issue bonds in the amount of about 19.1 million, because there's a $650,000 grant that comes with that. So it's not the full 19.8.
Okay. Any questions for the director?
I just need clear, I just want to make sure I understand this. So for a family of four, they might see a $5 increase in their monthly bill?
Right. And, and right now, we bill quarterly, although we are starting a pilot project to go, to go, I, I did say monthly. That was, you, you heard that right, to go to some, start trialing monthly billing. It's been a, a big request. It's easier to kind of plan for that kind of expense when it's monthly, but $5 monthly, all-in, 15 quarterly. And that, again, is for an average-sized resident. Obviously, there's some different impacts on some different customer classes. The industrial class went up quite a bit. That's about 22% increase there. And public authority, which impacts city, of course, sorry, town, and, and some of the irrigation, that, that's up there, too. But those are all a result of the rate study, and again, allocating the costs where they're coming from.
Who else had their hand up? Alder Person McComb?
Um, does, do the upgrades, and I realize there's a lot of different upgrades happening, but I just want to know, do they benefit a certain type of customer more than other customers? I, I guess I'm wondering if 15% across the board is, is fair.
Yeah.
Or if some people are having, getting more of an advantage out of this.
Right. We actually asked that question, too, of the audit team, just to make sure that things are getting assessed where they should be, right? Now, we don't have the same type of rate structure on the wastewater side as we do on the water, where things are broken down so finitely between industrial and, so your volumetric charge is your volumetric charge, and your fixed charge is your fixed charge. So really, the question there wasn't, do you assign more to a resident versus an industry? It's more about, do you assign more to the meter or the fixed charge, or to the volumetric charge? So on those things that are increasing that aren't variable, you usually put that on the meter end, and those that are variable, you put that on the volumetric charge. So the big project we're doing right now is a solids handling project, and it's, it's very much associated with both. You know, you need to be able to handle the solids appropriately, get rid of them affordably, and meet your permit all at once. That's really an all-in type thing. So in the end, when we were doing this, it came down to 15%, both fixed and volumetric is the way to go.
Okay. Thanks.
President Johnson?
So as, as it relates to that, and this is my understanding, so correct me if I'm totally off-base, but 15% also includes, let's say, an industry, and they're sending something with a higher amount of total suspended solids, they're, they're going to be assessed according to what they're sending.
Yeah.
Or if they have a high biological oxygen demand, they too will then...
Right.
They will be bumped up. So in, in many cases, to Alder McComb's question, the people who are using...
They are paying.
They are paying.
The only thing we're not changing in the structures are hauled-in waste rates, because we changed those last year, and, and that really doesn't affect the residences, right? These are businesses that come from in-town, but mostly out-of-town, to be honest, and we accept their waste as we're able. So we don't need to accept that if there's not plant capacity. So those have already been raised a little, but to that point, yeah, if you're bringing in something that's really high in BOD, COD, TSS, whatever it is, you're, you are paying for that. And we do have two industries or two places that we do sample on the wastewater line, so they pay for that, based on that sample and those loadings as well, right?
Okay. Any other questions for the director? Alder Person McComb?
I've got a couple more questions. So can you just say in 25 words or less why the project costs went up, please?
Um, yeah. I, I guess really what it comes down to is it's a huge project. You know, we based our initial project estimates on pretty preliminary numbers.
Okay.
And we went through the process of evaluating the technologies, evaluating the vendors, figuring out which of, which of the option gives us the lowest operating cost, and maybe the quickest, you can't really call it an ROI, because this is regulatory-based. We're not doing this to, in the end, pay for the equipment. We're doing this to make sure we meet our permit, and those things are changing down the road. So as we picked all those that do all of that combined with still representing our, our kind of look at energy, you know, we want to be as energy self-sufficient as we can. This is going to actually take us down a notch on that, because we're going to use so much heat to, to dry the solids, that that leaves a little less gas to make electricity with, so our electricity production will go down a little, but that's only because we're using it to pump heat into the system, so that's a good thing. So it was really the fact that over the span of the project, things changed, and to, to the tune of about, I suppose, you know, whatever that percentage is, but we were, we were at, we were at, the very first one I think we did was 13 and 1/2. It almost immediately went to 14 and 1/2 to 16, like 30% plan, right? And then at the end, we were a little over 19.
And one, one more question, because as Alder Jennings said, this, wow, okay, was a surprise to us. Have you, have you got a PR plan for hitting, hitting the public with this?
Yeah, I, it's, there's nothing easy about it, right?
Yeah.
We've got several staff on still who have gone through this before, and we've talked about it. We did have a public hearing on it that was published for the water rate side of things because the Public Service Commission regulates the water rates.
Right.
And that was published, it was August 1st, as in most years. Actually, it's the first time anybody's attended one of those since I've been around, but we did have one attendee there. So, yeah, there's, there's been, there's been those efforts. As far as kind of the PR campaign behind it, following this, of course, we'll put something on the website. I know it'll be covered in the, in the papers. And, you know, beyond that, it's a matter of talking it through on the phone with those who call. And the folks in the office are aware of all the circumstances, and when they get to beyond how they know how to explain it, then it comes to me, and we're there to explain it all. And that's really, that's really what it comes to. You know, we can't, we can't write up everybody's concerns with a, with an explanation. Sometimes it's just better to have a voice, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alderperson Nabel?
I just wanted to ask, when this, this meeting was August 1st, this was published, but was anything sent out to Alders or anyone else so that we could have let constituents know about this?
It was the normal Class 1 publication. So specifically, individually, I guess, no. Yeah.
I'm just thinking that because some people that I talked to recently have had complained about public not hearing things until too late or whatever, just to address that would be maybe to put it upon us as Alders to get that information so that, you know, it's another, another leg of getting that out to our constituents in a better way, because a lot of people don't get the paper.
I guess what would have been out there for the Alders is the minutes of the commission, where we went through the audit presentations, the rate presentations, the approval of that. But specifically, the, the hearing, no.
Thank you.
Maybe we can do a better job of that in the future. President Johnson, and then Alderperson Jennings?
I just want to say for the PR portion of it, I think creating a nutrient capture in a bio solids is very cool. Maybe that's just because I'm a solid waste kind of nerd. But I think it really does add to the, add to the dialogue. This isn't just about building a facility to meet compliance, which most people go, "Blah." But when you start talking about its attributes and how it actually can, will be contributing to the nutrient enrichment of soils, and, and instead of sending those solids back out, we're actually doing something positive. So...
Right, yeah.
I think that's, that's a really important point.
That's the fun part of it, yeah.
That is the fun part, I think, but, yeah.
Alder Jennings?
Perhaps you said this, but which month will they see this rise?
So September 1 is the effective date, which means that depending on the quarter that you land on, the first bills we'll send out that have any impact on this are going to be in November. And so the November bills, let me think about this for a second. I believe the November bills will be impacted a third by this, the December bills, two-thirds, and then in January, it'll be in full effect, depending on, because we bill a third of the city every month. So you'll have a third new rates, then two-thirds new rates, then full-on new rates in successive quarters. But the, the rates are effective September 1. And that was a requirement of the closing date of the bond, which you'll see in a second here.
Alder Jennings, or Alder Nabel?
Will this also be indicated for people to know that this is going to be a quarter, I mean, on the quarter, that when they get their bill, that they will expect that this is one-third of it, and it will be, you know, so they'd understand why their bill's going up twice as much the next month, you know?
Right, yeah. We can certainly put an explanation out there on that. It's hard to indicate that on the bill. Those are so clunky sometimes. But generally, the way that it's noticed is the fact that there are two rates shown on there. So for that meter reading, you have that, say, three-quarter-inch meter at this, and another one at slightly more, and that's what gets people calling on when we explain, "Okay, well, just so you know, the next time you get it, it's going to be in effect for all the quarters, not just one or two." Yeah.
Yeah. I know, that's kind of hard to put on there. It is.
Yeah.
I know, maybe it would solve you getting lots of calls.
Yeah. I don't think anything's going to solve that.
Any other questions for the Director? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to, we'll call you back up. We got, like I said, the next couple of items. So the, the item before you is the ordinance amendment for the adoption of the new sewer, rates for the new sewer utility. What are your wishes? President Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Okay, seconded by Alderperson Morrow. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Oberstadt is temporarily indisposed. I bet they're picking up Teddy on the microphones, too.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
902, that is adopted.
Again, without further, or any objections, I will move item number 17 up, and that's adoption of the new water rates. Are there any objections to that? Okay? Then before you are the adoption, or request to adopt the new water rates. What are your wishes? Alderperson Morrow?
I move, I move to adopt the new water rates.
Okay. Do we have a second? Anybody with a second? Seconded by Alderperson McComb. Discussion there. Alderperson Oberstadt?
I have to excuse myself. I think being five weeks old is, is too overwhelming right now, so we're going to go home.
I thought he was upset about the water and sewage rates.
You know, he uses the majority of the water in our house right now, so...
Absolutely, Alderperson. We'll have you excused for the rest of the meeting.
Sorry, kiddo. Thanks, guys.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Alderperson Phillips?
Didn't, didn't we just raise the rates here a little while back?
Director, I'll let you talk to that one.
2012.
2012 was that last raise, so six years ago?
There was a water rate.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
He doesn't like me. I pinched him.
Okay, if you are in favor of adopting the new water, I can be louder than you, buddy.
I don't know about that, Mayor.
If you are, if you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no. Why don't we take a second to, to get this squared away?
Oh, Steve.
Just goes to show you, no matter how old you are, have an issue at something.
See, Jolie's already complaining about the rate increase.
Watch out, Jolie. Oh, now it's fine.
Yeah, that's because I'm not holding him.
It's because he just wants me to go home.
Alders, if you would come back in as soon as you can. And then the awkward silence.
And then the awkward silence.
Yeah, yeah, do we have home music?
Sing seasonal music.
Cue the theme from Jeopardy.
That's all I got. All right, well, there she is. Okay, if you, the motion is to approve the adoption of the new water rates. If you are in favor, you will vote yes. Opposed, you will vote no. And clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
902?
902, that is adopted. Now, back to item number 14, page 122 of your packet, resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of up to $19,177,115 in sewage system revenue bond, Series 2018, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto. Alderperson Slawinski?
I'll move approval of the stated resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alderperson Niebone. Discussion? Alderperson Morrow?
When is the projected, when's the projected completion?
Early 2020.
Early 2020, in case the microphone didn't pick that up. Early 2020.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Okay? Just for clarification, the motion, do we have a second? We do. The motion is to approve the resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of up to $19,177,115 in sewage system revenue bond, Series 2018, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto. Is that correct?
Alderperson Niebone, you seconded, correct?
Yep. Okay. Okay. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
902.
902, that's adopted. Item number 15 is page 145 of your packet, and that is authorization to adopt the State of Wisconsin Clean Water Fund Program Financial Assistance Agreement with principal forgiveness. Alderperson Nabel?
I'd like to move to approve the State of Wisconsin Clean Water Fund Program Financial Assistance Agreement.
Okay. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alderperson McComb. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
902.
902, that's adopted. Item number 18 is an ordinance amendment for the water and sewage systems, adoption of additional language for the connection to municipal water, section 13.09 of the Revised Municipal Code. Director, you want to explain this one?
Would you like me to?
Please.
I don't understand.
Why else would we keep you this late on your week off?
So this section of the ordinances, if anybody recalls, has a list of addresses in it that are specifically allowed by ordinance to have municipal water. So really, what's triggering this is requests for water, all right? In those, if that address that's listed is deemed to have been the address that referred to that property when the ordinance was adopted, which I think was in the '60s, we usually get commission action to say, "Do you agree that this is the intent of this ordinance?" Because it's not parcel numbers, it's addresses, right? So properties change, lots split, and everything else. Well, on top of that, it says any other properties as deemed acceptable by the council. And what happens is that where we have utilities buried in a right-of-way, adjacent to a parcel that's not in the City Stevens Point, often enough, we get requests to connect to those services when they're well or the septic goes bad. And so far, the response has been, yeah, you have to annex, and then you can pay your deferred assessments and hook up, right? Well, there are some cases where that property isn't direct annexable, and so it kind of comes into the situation where it'd be a no-brainer if they could. They'd be like, "Okay, so can I, you know, you can go through the process, ask your neighbors, and figure this out and the other thing." But really, it's up to the council to say, "Do we want to just allow that under certain conditions?" And so through discussion, what we determined is that perhaps what we want to do is say, if they're there, they're adjacent, so they're available, you're trying to maybe avoid the cost of a well or septic or both, we'll, we'll say, "Yes, you can connect to them. If you want the water, you have to take the sewer, too, if it's available," because there is that whole interest we have in getting people on sewer, especially if you're upgrading to a well, for example, one of our wells, "but that we will record a document," which hasn't been created yet, we're just waiting for approval of this, "that says upon a time when your property is directly annexable to the City Stevens Point, that process will be triggered."
Alderperson Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. So is it possible to connect to the utilities, to just connect to the utilities, or are we talking about annexation of the property into the city?
Right now, the way it stands is that if you aren't one of the properties listed specifically by address in the ordinance, you cannot connect to water without annexing. You can connect to sewer. In fact, there's language in the thing that says, "Nothing in this ordinance is specifically meant to prohibit connection to the sewer utility." So that's not the issue, it's the water. So unless you're listed in ordinance, and really, the intent of those, that list in the ordinance was to cover those properties that were already either connected prior to the ordinance being written, so it's like, "Well, you can't disconnect us," right? Or where the utilities already kind of served the property. There was a manhole serving the property, they just weren't using it. So those were meant to kind of cover where it was already. So in this case, it's really about, say you're out of the City Stevens Point, but you're two neighbors to one side of you before there's City Stevens Point land. Those two neighbors are prohibiting you from doing direct annexation, perhaps, but the utilities are available. Currently, our ordinance doesn't allow it. You can on a one-by-one basis, but in these cases, where they're available, they're, you know, if, if the time comes when they can annex, and the agreement says they will, it's kind of like just starting sooner, and perhaps avoiding a conflict down the road where somebody said, "Well, now I can annex, but two years ago, I put the sewer and septic, or septic and well in, that cost me thousands and thousands of dollars. Now this just, this is a bad deal," you know?
So this is to continue to enable people to connect without being annexed?
Until they're able to annex. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for the Director? Alderperson Nabel?
You know, this sounds kind of silly, but then, so who pays for the running of that utility through there? Does the person that's asking for it, or is that just...
In a lot of cases, so in these cases, it's where the mains already exist in the street. And in a lot of those cases, the laterals are already, are already essentially to the property line. In some cases, they might not be, but they're, they're responsible for those kinds, just like you are if you're a city resident. If you need a water or sewer service, it's your expense. Yep.
So if it's not that close and it has to go further, who pays for it?
They do.
That's adding on to the system to go that far?
Yeah. All extensions are developer-paid. In some cases, the city can be the developer, but that's, that's the city. The utilities doesn't pay for the extensions. So that would be in the case where there's a big development or subdivision or business park or something like that. Yeah. Otherwise, it's going to be the property owner in this case. Yeah.
Any other questions for the Director? Thank you, sir. What are your wishes? Alder Slawinski?
I'll move approval of the ordinance amendment, water and sewage systems, adoption of additional language for the connection to municipal water, section 1309 of the Revised Municipal Code.
Thank you. It's seconded by Alderperson Shore. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
902.
902, that's adopted. Item number 19 is on page 208 of your packet, agreement for water service with the village of Park Ridge. Director, come on down.
Sit here if you want.
So this is a copy of the agreement. If you guys are familiar with Odessa Court in Park Ridge, it goes west off of Green Avenue. It's a cul-de-sac. David Rao built a bunch of twin homes there. This is their ordinance, ordinance 8.22, to account for our water serving their infrastructure to their residents in a way that's acceptable to us. This isn't the one for the new subdivision that's going immediately to the south of that because there was some crossing of emails, they didn't, it's going on their next meeting agenda. So it'll be identical to this except for a different parcel number listed. So I thought if it's acceptable, we just approve it in concept in that it's just going to list the other parcel number. But it's for the same purpose, and the highlight of that is really that it notes that water lines and fire hydrants are going to be installed, they'll continue to be the property of the village. Everything in there is subject to the same rules as city residences are in Chapter 13 of the ordinances, that they'll work with us on delinquencies, just like we work with the city and others, you know, on delinquent bills, and that we have access to the property similar to the way we do in, so it's really just to allow us to operate the same way of the ordinances, that they'll work with us on delinquencies, just like we work with the city and others, you know, on delinquent bills, and that we have access to the property similar to the way we do in one. So it's really just to allow us to operate the same way we do. The copy of the hydrant maintenance agreement is something that we handle administratively, so we'll just sign up another one that mentions the hydrants on that street. It gives us the ability to make sure that if they're not working, we tell them to fix them. If they don't fix them, we do it and we bill them.
Okay. Alder Person, let's go with Morrow first.
So as we discussed before, these, the residents of Park Ridge are going to be able to hook up with city water and sewer, but still be in the village of Park Ridge.
Right, so going back to last item, this actually is one of the properties that is covered in the ordinance that can have municipal water by ordinance already.
Because the reason why I bring that up is the concerns that the town of Hall had, if they were going to hook up, that they were going to be forced to annex. So this would be an example of that another municipality would be able to still keep their own land and not have to be annexed.
Right, I mean, there are some differences between the two, but going back to the onset of the ordinance, the property before it was split up that had the address was listed in the ordinance to allow this one to have water without annexation. Yeah. And this pretty much ties up almost all the land in Park Ridge that could have water, you know? So I think this almost does it, yeah.
Director, just for clarification, you're asking for approval of the sample listed in the packet with, you're changing the parcel numbers.
Just to apply to the right land.
Right. We're good with that. Alder Person Phillips?
I guess I'm a little bit confused, but to break it down, all these addresses that are listed here.
Sorry, sir, I was wrong on that 208. It's actually page, I missed it now, 212. 212. 208 was for item number 18. I had it written down incorrectly. So you will be on page 212 for this agreement.
That's for the hydrant maintenance agreement.
211? I'm sorry, 211.
211 is the same type of ordinance that they'll be adopting, that we're asking for action on now.
Yeah.
It'll be that, except for a different parcel number, essentially.
We do 212.
Because that one refers to Odessa Court properties.
Okay, so my understanding is here, if you want sewer and water in Park Ridge, other than these listed, you need to request annexation.
If you want water anywhere but what's listed there, you need to get permission or annex. So the council can give the authority for anybody to be a water customer, but these are the ones that are granted that ability. And actually, the page you were looking at is right, they're like the ones that are listed on 208. In the town of Hall, here's the properties. In the town of Park Ridge, they're listed on 209. Those are the properties that are allowed to have water without further action. They're just kind of codified in, right? You can have municipal water. Anybody else has to ask permission, and then it's really a matter of they're always allowed if they just annex. So if it's somebody who, to date, has been outside of this prescriptive list or not in the city, and they've had the ability to annex, our response is, yes, you can have the water if you annex. Now, on those where they're always really near the city boundary anyway, because our utilities are there, the one we covered last item, so if there's a chance that enough annexations are going to take place in the next few years, that pretty soon, they'll be directly annexable, we're saying, sure, you can take the water. You have to take sewer, too, then, by way of that agreement. And then, as soon as you're direct annexable, you're going to annex it into the city. And so that was the last item. This one here, we actually took item, action at the commission and it went through council, might have been last month or the month before, to make sure that it was agreed that the property we're talking about, it's Angelo Court, I think is the proposed.
Angelo Court? Does that sound right?
Yeah. South of Odessa Court to the west off Green Avenue is actually one of the ones that's listed here. Address isn't the way to do this. And the other thing is it says, maybe not by address, but there's also the "so far from Green Avenue." So on 208, it mentions, "Created after June 2, 1967, which lie within 125 feet from the center line of the following described streets, Maria and Green." So they're actually, by way of that, allowed to have the water. But we took action anyway to clear it up, just to say, so we're all clear, this is intended to be allowed already. The answer was yes. So that wasn't a problem. This agreement, however, because that property wasn't a single residence where it's straightforward service end, they dedicated a street to the village and did all that, we just do that agreement to make sure they understand that if there's a delinquent customer or anything like that, we can shut them off the way we do our own, we can send them to the tax roll the way we do our own, and that they're going to build and maintain the utilities in the street the way we do ours.
Alder Phillips, any further questions?
Well, I just hope we don't get into the situation where we change the policy of Stevens Point as having to annex. You need to annex if you want sewer and water. I think that was, it's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, and the ordinance all along has been for water only.
Yeah, but we wanted to sneak in the back door, and here we are.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Anyone? For Alder Person Phillips?
I'll move approval of the agreement for the water service for the village of Park Ridge.
Okay, seconded by President Johnson. Discussion there? Hearing none. Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
902?
902, that's adopted. Item number 20 is on page 213 of your packet, and that's an ordinance amendment regarding the roundabout project on North Point Drive and Division Street with the sections listed there of the Revised Municipal Code. Because we have a new roadway, we need to adopt ordinances that regulate the speed and repeal ones that are no longer valid, and that's what you see before you. Alder Person Jennings?
I move to approve, but I have a comment after.
Okay, do we have a second? We'll give the second to Alder Person Slawinski. Alder Person Jennings, you have the floor.
Yes, I was hoping to see some kind of safety orientation day or days prior to the roundabout opening, both for vehicles and bicycles, and I'm not seeing any of that. I do hope at a minimum, there's a Wisconsin DOT video for roundabouts, but it would really be nice to have a day or two days for people to work with PD, drive it, learn it. Also for bicyclists, the speed limit in the roundabout is 15 miles per hour, so bicycles can use, take the full lane if they're traveling the speed limit. So there's a number of safety things that I think would help people become less intimidated, and it would just be good PR. And I'm not seeing any of that happening, so I just wondered if something is planned.
We have nothing planned. There are plenty of resources available through the Department of Transportation, through the internet. I did get a copy of the video, that link that you sent, we're going to get that posted on the city website, but there are no plans to keep the roundabout closed so people can practice driving through that.
I'm saying specifically before it opens, is there...
We can't, because they're still working on it. They'll be working on it until, well, the way it's planned right now, August 30. We have move-in day for the university beginning August 30, so that's when we intend on opening the roundabout. There is no plan to keep it closed for a longer period of time so people can practice driving.
Let me repeat, I'm not asking to keep it closed longer. I'm asking, on the 28th, let's say, can there be, are they striping like right up until the day they open it?
They will be working until the hour that they open.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So there's not an opportunity beforehand, and I apologize, we had a little miscommunication there, but no, there's no opportunity. They will be working right up until the time they open, and they're going to open as soon as they possibly can to accommodate the incoming UWSP students and their parents. So we don't have an opportunity to get in there and do anything prior to that.
All right.
Any other comments? Alder Person Niebone?
Might there, might it not be a bad idea to perhaps have a little bit increased police presence on opening day to help facilitate movement through the roundabout?
I think that's probably a pretty good idea.